To the March monthly meeting of the school board, if you'd join me and say the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and thanks, everyone, for showing up. Toby, would you do the roll call, please?
Sure. Peter Turk.
Here.
Barry Schmeling.
Here.
Susan Kessler.
Here.
Taylor Wisham.
Here.
Marlo Brown.
Here.
Paige Caravoo.
Here.
Roseanne Han.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have two communication items on our agenda. First is citizen comments. And I'll remind everyone who can make a comment, these are for items that are not on the agenda for action tonight. I have, it's like four comments here. Please remember, we have a three-minute limit, and we'd ask you to come up to the desk here and speak into the microphone. And my colleague Barry will raise his hand if you get to 2 minutes and 45 seconds to kind of give you a visual cue to include your comments. We'll start with, forgive me, on the Yolanda Hall? Did I get that right? Okay.
My name is Yolanda Hall, and I live in the Burlington School District. It is a parent's right to direct the upbringing, education, and mental health treatment of their children. It's one of the most basic constitutional rights every parent holds dear. Yet I'm seeing the school district not only ignoring parents' concerns and rights, but actively working against them, because this isn't about education anymore. It's about the indoctrination of the next generation and push away those who dissent from the government's deferred ideology. Sorry about that. The Burlington School Board does not believe in censorship. It values the importance of intellectual freedom. I personally call it indoctrination, not education. In the classroom and public school libraries, there are texts that involve some controversial topics, such as, but not limited to, abuse, neglect, sexual explicit content, gender identity, race, et cetera. When I talk to the people in the community about these books, it is overwhelmingly, both from both parties, political parties, that they are against these type of books being available to children. Which of these children will be harmed by them not accessing explicit pornographic vulgar books, like the book called Identical by Ellen Hopkins? In this book, a father takes his very young daughter, rapes her violently, which is described in full detail as if you were there watching the whole thing. At one point in the book, when daddy finishes, I'm not going to get in it because I know you're going to cut me off, but she does ask her father, "What's the matter? Did I love you enough?" Then he goes on telling her that this is our secret and not to tell their mother because she might go away. His attack was brutal, bloody, worthless, except for the vicious, "Shut the, you know what, up", at her pitiful screams and pleas, "To please, please, no daddy. No, it hurts." I'm not going to keep going because I know you'll shut me down. Do you understand that the rate of suicide among children, sex trafficking, and drug overdoses at its all-time high? At the last school board meeting, we had a formal, sorry, I'm nervous. A school staff speak on how these books are good for our children. Has she ever had to cut down a child who was trying to hang themselves? Or ever have to cut off items off a child's neck that is so tight that they need medical attention? Has she ever seen scars or fresh cut marks from a child who was a cutter and does this to relieve their pain? Or has she ever seen suicide scars, cigarette burns on a child? Do you know what a headbanger is in an institution? It is when a child won't stop banging their head on a sharp or hard object and has to be restrained. I can go on and on, but I only get three minutes. But I've seen this. I witnessed this. If you think that we are a small majority that are against this, you need to think again. It is about informing the parents, grandparents, and the public that they need to know what's going on in our school district.
Okay, thank you. Paul Coburnick?
Paul Coburnick, Burlington. Today, I'm here to talk to you about the book proposal. And while I agree with many points of it, there are still some goals that I would like to see taken care of. Many of us parents are not seeking an outright ban of the books. I know I've heard in many meetings, people speak up, and that was one of their objections to what our goals were. From what most of the parents here have said, we just want some kind of way of knowing what's in our books. Also, the issue I have is that I heard that it's hard to tell what's sexually explicit. While the Wisconsin State Legislature, in Section 948.11, it clearly and concisely provides the definition of what is considered sexually explicit. So this could be our basis for determining if the books have that content or not, to help with the mature content part of it. Because I heard in the last meeting that there was no definition, but it's a pretty clear definition. Also, in the media, they use PG ratings, R ratings, restricted ratings, and stuff like that. And they don't use the whole movie as context. They use passages from the movie. And if there's anything that has expletives or sexual content, it's an R rating. And if it goes further than that, it's an NC rate. And that isn't based on the whole movie, so you don't have to watch the whole movie, but it's based on actual, just portions of it. So if the motion picture industry can do it based on synopsis, why can't we use that for our books? Just the label mature content. Because my question is, if we look at some of this, we're concerned with the sexually explicit material of the book. And basically, if you read one of those excerpts, is that not sexually explicit content? It may not be, you know, in the best interest of some people to have the labels on the books, but for most of us concerned parents, that's what I would like to see, is just so that we know that that book has that content available. It opens up dialogue with our kids, so that we can ask them the important questions of why they want to read this book. What's the purpose, you know? But it opens up dialogue. Now, when I look at the ALA website, it's very clear that they don't want to see any kind of censorship at all. So using them as a guide, they're definitely not for censorship. So what they call censorship is basically putting a label on the book. So I don't know if I trust them as a usage. Thank you.
Thank you. Lori Hewitt?
Do you have his hand out? I'm going to do headlines. Immediately following the 213 meeting, I knew that my next effort needed to be what it needed to be, but I did not know what I would discover. I created an inventory of books, and I go through my steps, and I can go through that. I discovered correlations that, if acknowledged by the board, BASD can save time, save money, and most importantly, expediently get all obscene mature books locally tagged mature within a month, and with minimal effort to keep updated monthly. So how did I communicate this information? I knew I needed to put a presentation together, which you all have a copy of that as well. It's a little thicker. We had a great event on Saturday, March 11th. We had attendees from Burlington, Waterford, and Eagle. We are reaching out to all of southeastern Wisconsin and have also received interest from Sheboygan, McMonaco, Elkhorn, and Yeung Grove. I received this email from one of the attendees, and this really says a lot. "Your presentation Saturday was excellent. I was so pleased that you weren't encouraging book banning, but instead, a moderate plan that I could get behind. I will support you and endorse you." Other messages from that day, there's a 52 slide. Everybody can take a copy of it. It's out on the table. They really, everyone that was there really wanted it to be available. We'll do more presentations, more information on that. With any effort, we learn from it, and hopefully, we can apply those lessons learned. We can learn from the book committee initial efforts. We got great foundation in place from the book committee. I was on the book committee. With any effort, we learn, oh, I already saw that. We can apply our lessons learned. We can save, we can save time and money. And I'm going to move on to page three. So, you know, you guys can look at this on your own, but we're 18 months into this. And if we just go with what was proposed in 213, I don't know how many more months it'll take to get the 50 books that I currently have identified labeled mature. And that's important. "No recognition of excerpts. Force reading of books entirety. Throttle back the book reclassifications to two per person per year and limit the reclassification committees twice per year." What we're proposing here will get things identified, I believe, within a month, and then monthly, keep monthly updated. On page four, you can see I got a picture of books. I was going to have picked books here, but, you know, there's 41 books safeguarded as mature by BASD already, which is awesome. And there's 50 that I've identified that are not safeguarded. You can draw correlations from what Paul referenced to the law. You can draw correlations from what the law depicts as harmful to exactly what Book Look Rating uses for three, four, and five ratings. And all of the 41 books that Destiny has labeled adults or Angie has used title mature content label, all of them are rated, also rated three, four, and five. So I'm drawing a correlation. Going to page five. So this just gives you the data on the books. So 40%, there's currently, apparently, there's 40% of the books.
Yeah, sorry, it's three minutes.
Sorry. Well, you guys can take a look at the rest of this.
Thank you. Matt Snork?
Good evening. So I have three topics I'd like to cover. The first one is, I just became aware of the fact recently that one of your teacher's assistants you had in elementary school no longer works here due to an issue with coming into school intoxicated. Apparently, she had to drink to get through her workday, or maybe personal life issues, don't know. I think it was highly inappropriate to not advise a place that called for a background check to at least give them notice of that. That seems like a huge liability. I can't imagine you're shielded by law or prevented from notifying them and having a teacher that is in need of help with an alcoholic issue going to another school and not telling them. It makes them look, you really bad, and them look really bad. Secondly, I'm extremely disappointed in your selection process that you did to fill Mr. Bird's seat. I've talked to three or four people in the community, and they feel, in discussions, we've had it, pick and save in gas stations, they feel that you picked somebody, and I do as well, that's most likely to vote like most of you and not necessarily challenge anybody, and be basically rubber stamped for a lot of decisions going forward. There were seven other candidates, and in my opinion, all seven were a stronger candidate than when you selected. So I hope you do better when that happens again for other openings. And then, we want to go back to the porn books again, too. I think with those books that we have, schools are normalizing things like rape, incest, murder, drugs. I also really shouldn't take them out. I don't want censorship. I'm all about freedom of speech. But they should be locked in a glass cabinet, like we do for pharmaceuticals, or behind a counter where the librarian controls it, like we do at stores for chewing tobacco or alcohol, or anything that matters, even condoms. Some stores keep those behind the counters. We should have that, and every parent should be notified, and they should say, "Yes, I want my kid to have that toxic pornography book. I want my child to go ahead and read those books. I want my child to get books that say, 'He kicked me, and I curled into a ball.' I want a blowjob. He held his dick in hand. I've never done it before,' I said. I'm a virgin. Put it in your mouth. I kneel before him. Can I put my bra back on?"
I miss Mr. Snork. We've been through this before with the obscenity.
It's not obscene. It's in your schools.
This is the second.
Are you admitting that you have obscene books in schools?
No, this isn't a time for debate. This is time for public comment.
So why are you guys, okay?
I remind you of our policy that I'm tasked to enforce here.
So I'm going to ask that the board do something about it. We've got 50 more books that parents are asking you to do something about. I know it's an election year, right? You don't want to set your status quo. So you got to make sure that you make your majority happy. Don't worry about that. Put the kids first, the parents first. This is highly inappropriate. Thank you.
All right, we have a board member report on workshops and meetings attended. Anything in the last month? Roseanne?
Yeah, I made several trips to Madison, because as you know, I'm president of the board up there now, and it's been very exciting. But we're needing to replace our executive person in charge of all the whole state. And we've had candidates from all over the country who've been returning some of their qualifications and so forth. And as I'm reading through these, and I was reading through the questions that we asked them, you know, so that we knew that they would be able to handle this job, I couldn't help but think of our administrators here that meet all of those qualifications. It made me feel very proud of what we have here. And also, I want to say something about, I know it's not, but it's the Mamma Mia. I don't know how many of you went to see it. It was fantastic. I saw it professionally done, and I like the BHS version much better, much more energy and excitement. We've got to be proud of those kids. Anyway, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else on the board? Okay, superintendent's report.
Yes, thank you. Later this evening, the board will take final action on Kevin Bird's resignation. Just want to publicly thank Kevin for his years of service to our students and to the community. And also, in light of that, want to also acknowledge publicly Paige Caravoo, who joins us. She took her oath of office just this past Wednesday, and this is her first official meeting with us. So hopefully, you'll have an opportunity to meet her here in the coming weeks and months. Also, this is a time of year where students and their learning is being measured. And just this past week, as I see Amy Livonian out there, our juniors took the ACT and, for the first time ever, by computer, which is a little bit unnerving the first time you do that. And yet, that's definitely the future of where that and many of our other exams for students in terms of their large stake, high-stakes testing is going. So certainly, I wish them all well now as they move on from that and potentially, I'll look to take that again at some point in the future. Many of our students do. Also, after spring break, we'll have a whole nother wave of students who will be taking Wisconsin's Forward exam. And so this, tis the season in terms of the high-stakes testing that our students participate in. Also, I just want to mention that since our last school board meeting, not that anybody is counting, we've had three closures of school due to severe weather. And so I mentioned this, it was February 16th, it was a little over seven inches of snow. It's February 22nd. There was a winter storm warning, and the timing of that was really quite brutal. And then on the 23rd, we had four of our schools that had no power. And if you remember that ice and perhaps the damage it caused to you personally, too, it was pretty intense. But no matter what decision is made on those days, I feel like it's coming at me kind of in all directions. And one of the questions that has come up is, why not a two-hour delay? I've heard that a little bit. And I do think it's helpful maybe for folks here tonight, but also who may be listening at home, to recognize that the two-hour delay, sort of for all intents and purposes, in this moment in our history, is probably just done. It doesn't exist as an option. And really, the primary driver of that is that our bus drivers, many of our bus drivers, have other day jobs. And so if we delay by two hours, we don't have transportation. And the other feedback that we hear from parents really quite often is, "If I'm going to have to miss a day of work, then I'm going to spend the whole day with my child. I don't have a two-hour delay option at work." So we hear that feedback as well, too. The other part is, I just want to take this opportunity to also offer big thanks to our Buildings and Grounds team and our district administrators who make these days happen. Our crew this past week was in at 2:00 in the morning, and we know we have just a specific amount of time it takes to clear all of our lots and make it safe for kids to come to school. And so just appreciation to them as well. This has also recently been the time where we're registering our families for both before and after care as well as for our 4K program. Many of you may already know, if you're impacted by this, that Plymouth, who's been one of our wonderful partners over the years, they've decided to discontinue the care that they offer for our students in our schools. And this year, that was an option that assisted 148 students. And so that wraparound care is something that we're going to be covering internally now and kind of expanding that as we move forward, so that we're not leaving anybody out in the cold, so to speak. We also had just 70, what I would say, future BASD students. The class of 2037, just in case anybody's keeping track on our four-year-olds. Class of 2037 had that screening on March 1st, so it's always exciting to meet the little ones. And then the next opportunity for anybody that may have missed that will come up on April 26th. Then, of course, I would be remiss to not just celebrate with you some of the cool stuff that our amazing students do. Just this last week alone, you just heard Roseanne mention the musical performance of Mamma Mia. We also had our bandarama in Singabration. A lot of this involves a lot of our same kids at BHS, and they're just amazing in what they're able to do when they perform. Earlier this month, too, you may have caught some word about the Read Across America Week, which we celebrate in the schools. I think some folks right here actually came and read to students in our elementary schools. And then, of course, later this week coming up, we've got a pretty amazing elementary school Battle of the Books, so stay tuned for that competition as well. Also, 116 students this time around participated in the Black History Month Art and Essay Contest, which was presented by BCDR. Just great to see the happiness that comes from the kids that participate in that. And then, one upcoming event, Driven will be hosting their annual Easter Egg Hunt on Saturday, April 1st. And if you've never seen this, it's Easter Egg Chaos, is what it really is with kids everywhere. So it's just awesome, and it's worth your time if you want to come check it out. So it's an exciting time to be part of the school district. There's lots to celebrate and be part of. And hopefully, you find something that you can engage in with us. So, thank you.
All right, thanks, Steve. I tried to take credit with my kids on the number of snow days recently, and they weren't having that. They knew it didn't come from me. Next up, we have consent agenda items. So the board, and these are all available on the website in our agenda, but we grouped together our last two minutes, minutes from our last two meetings, our bank statements and bills, the appointments, resignations, retirements, and terminations, and donations into consent agenda. So I'd entertain a motion for to approve the items.
I approve the items. Second.
Okay, motion was made and seconded. Any comments? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay?
If I may really quick?
Yeah, of course.
Just one comment, now that it's officially approved. I want to make mention that we've had a lot of conversation about the principal role at Burlington High School. And seated amidst us in the audience tonight is Amy Livonian. And Amy joined our team this past fall as an assistant principal, then agreed to serve as the interim principal. And over the past couple of months, in conversations with staff at Burlington High School, has really won over their trust and their faith. And so as part of tonight's appointments was Amy Livonian as the permanent principal going forward for Burlington High School. So congratulations, Amy.
Yeah, thanks for highlighting that, Steve. Congratulations, Amy. All right, next, we have three items for information and discussion only. And the first is the Dyer Elementary School Improvement Plan. So we have a number of staff members from Dyer School who met with the board before the meeting to discuss school district issues, and now we're going to hear their improvement plan. So looking forward to hearing what's going on at Dyer.
All right, good evening, everybody. My name is Ryan Heft. I probably serve as principal at Dyer Elementary School. With me tonight, I have some of our staff as well. We're going to be talking a little bit about our student achievement, programming, and school culture as well. So before we get started, I'd like to ask our staff or president to stand up and give them a round of applause, please, as everything we do would not be possible without them. So as I said, my name is Ryan Heft. I serve as principal at Dyer. I'm going to be talking a little bit about our student achievements from the fall through current.
Oh, Jenny, you got to speak into the microphone, or they won't hear you at home, so.
My name is Jenny Holly, and I'm the school counselor at Dyer Elementary School.
Hi, my name is Debbie Truwin Way, and I'm a Montessori 1 through 3 teacher, and I'm going to talk about Montessori programming.
Okay, so I wanted to talk a little bit about our student achievement. And so this is our data from Fall 2022 I-Ready assessment. And so this specifically is our progress in reading, as far as that goes. So on the top, the top row, we'll see overall placement of our entire school. And so in the fall, when students took the assessment, 39% of our students were proficient in reading in all of the categories below. So you can see the placement by domain. The darker green and the lighter greens show students who were at and above their current grade. So again, a total of 39% of our students in the fall were proficient in those reading domains. This breaks it down further by grade. So you can see in kindergarten, 41% of students were proficient. In grade one, 18%, grade two, 35%, grade three, 41%, grade four, 44%, grade five, 45%, and then grade six, 72%. As you might know, we are the only elementary school in the district that has sixth grade as they are part of our Montessori program. The rest of traditional sixth grade are over at Carter. So again, this was our Fall 2022 assessment data, where students started the year in reading. So when we look at our school improvement plan, we knew that reading was an area that we wanted to focus on as far as growth goes. And so our 2021-2022 growth in reading was 85%. And so when we look at what would realistic growth look like, we did look at, you know, what that growth was last year. Again, it was at 85%. And then, with some of the additional programming that supports we put into place this year, we really wanted to strive for 100% growth, so essentially doubling our percentage of students who are proficient in the fall. And so that 2022 to 2023 goal, then, if we start at 39% proficiency and we're aiming for 100% growth, the overall goal then by the end of the year would be that 78% of students were proficient. So this shows our growth from Fall 2022 to Winter 2023. So in the column on the left, you'll see again what the proficiency was in reading in the fall versus the winter that's there on the right. So you can see quite a jump for every grade. So kindergarten jumped up to 85%, first grade jumped up to 52%, second grade's currently at 62%, third grade 64%, fourth grade 62%, fifth grade 53%, and then sixth grade 86%. Yes. Correct. Yep, correct.
Why don't we repeat that for the microphone, just so everyone catches it?
Yeah, absolutely. So the expectation is that students are proficient by the end of the school year, right? And so when we look and we see that only 41% of students were proficient in kindergarten, the expectation is for them to be proficient by the end of the school year, right? And so currently, 85% are where we would expect kindergarteners to be by the end of the 2022 to 2023 school year.
Okay, that's important to note, too, because when I, we saw the 18% number, that was a bit shocking. But that's for the end of the school year for first graders, and that's the fall assessment, just to be clear.
Yep. Okay, and so then when we look at Dyer overall proficiency and where they're at in the winter, again, that fall proficiency was 39%. So again, 39% of our entire school are where they would be expected to be by the end of the school year, right? That mid-year goal was 58.5% would be proficient, and the mid-year actual was 64%. So again, if we were aiming for 100% growth, you know, 50% of that would have been 58.5%. So that's where we would have wanted students to be by mid-year. Again, the actual percentage of students who are proficient or where they'd be expected to be at the end of the school year is at 64%. The end-of-year goal, if students made 100% growth, the goal would be for them to be at 78% proficiency by the end of the school year. Obviously, we don't know what the end-of-year actual percentage is, but we are well above where we would have wanted to be mid-year and very much so on track to meet that 78% or exceed that by the end of the school year. Any questions as far as reading proficiency growth from the fall to the winter, or about our school improvement plan as it relates to reading?
You may have said this already. What is your measurement? Are you using I-Ready?
Yep, correct.
Okay. And then, what do you attribute the growth to?
So there's some major changes that we made over the last couple of years. One is implementing skills time. And so that's something that we had last year as well. And so that's something that we had last year as well, this split between math and reading last year. This year, district-wide, we are working specifically on skills where, you know, students might need to fill some gaps and then provide enrichment opportunities as well, specifically only in reading. So that's half an hour every day for every grade that's specific to reading. In addition to that, we've spent a large part of this year working on professional development on the science of reading as well and really working to implement direct instruction as far as phonics go and phonological awareness. So those are the major things I would attribute that. Any other questions? All right, I'm going to hand it over to Debbie, who's going to talk a little bit about our academic programming, specifically Montessori.
So we have some exciting news. We are celebrating twenty-five years this year of having our Montessori program in district. So we're very excited for that. It opened in nineteen ninety-eight by a family in district who was really interested in the Montessori approach, and we have approached twenty-five years. Currently, we have eight classes ranging from four K through sixth grade. And next year, we have a big move coming. We're all going to be housed in one building, and we are looking forward to that because it's been twenty-five years since we've been together, all together in one building, and now we're actually going to have our own building. So we're really looking forward to that for next school year. We have approximately a hundred and ninety students enrolled in the program at this point, and we have lots of really great ideas that we'd love to share with all of you to continue to grow our program. For those of you that are unfamiliar with Montessori, or if I could give you just like a quick elevator speech of what Montessori is, I kind of put this together here, that Montessori is a prepared learning environment in which a mixed age group of children are able to learn and explore and set their own goals daily while following grade-level essential skills and district benchmarks. And when we talk about the prepared environment, each classroom is set up. It's painstakingly set up by the teachers, and we make sure that the works are on the shelves and that they're engaging to our students. This means that making sure that the works are correctly placed, they're cleaned, and they are complete each and every morning. So the students are responsible for caring for the room. This happens to be our cultural area where we start with the large and we move to the small. So we start with the universe, and we head down to actually us on this planet. Here's the botany and zoology. So these are the different subjects that we have in our curriculum. The cultural area includes topics in geography, botany, zoology, history, and international culture. We do a lot of hands-on science experiments, and they're used to deepen the understanding. We are currently, the four-six program just had, just finished studying Egypt, and they had a wonderful program. Then a couple of people came and saw it, where they recreated Egypt, and it was just fantastic. Everything was made by the students, and parents came and classrooms came and learned a lot about Egypt. This is our math area, and our math area is really set up, and they learn with, really with concrete materials. So with materials, and they learn concrete versus abstract to start. And so they move from, like, they can really physically feel like, what is a hundred? They hold up a hundred square, and they can feel that weight versus a unit beat. So it's really nice for them to use the materials. Language and reading area, you can see that, again, we have a lot of materials. The students are responsible for going to the shelves after small group presentations. The children are taught where they are on the shelves and where to put them back after they use them. I read about mixed age groups because we do have the different age groups within one classroom. So we currently have four K, five K together, and then we have three, one through three classrooms, and we have three, four through six grade classrooms. And I read somewhere that the youngest students are the watchers, the middle students are the workers, and the oldest students are the teachers. And to kind of explain that, they're all working. However, we do have a mentor-mentee program, and the students really look up to, they watch the older students in the class to see what they're doing. They're invited up to presentations, and they really look forward to doing the work that the older peers are doing in the classroom. You can see some of the pictures of the students working together across grade levels. The picture in the lower left, our four-six program came in earlier this year and did lessons, and you can just see their faces, how engaged they are, just wonderful. This is another aspect of it, learning and exploring, giving them a hands-on approach, allows them to completely learn ideas by manipulating materials. They can also share what they've learned by creating projects. So when we take a look at the middle picture on the bottom there, this was some students, they were interested in the rainforest, so they created the layers of the rainforest to explain their learning of it. The other picture is when we study the English settlers and the Wampanoag tribe. They built their own village and built, created gardens out of dirt from outside of school, created their vegetables out of clay, so they really get into it when they get a chance to. And then we can see some of the materials that we have to enrich our learning. Students are responsible for setting their own goals daily. And so when we take a look at work plans, and I'm just going to pop open a first-grade work plan here. Work plan, work plans are set up on a month-long basis, and there are curriculum spirals throughout each month. And students in the first grade level, it's really color-coded for them, which makes it easier for them. Montessori created works that, all of our operation works in math, red is for addition, green is for subtraction, yellow is multiplication, and blue is division. So when I put the works on the work plan, it's color-coded for the younger students to be able to find it on the shelves. And as we kind of move forward, less of that is used in the work plans. One of Maria's, Montessori's founding tenets was to follow the child. Because we are in a public school setting, we still do that to some extent, but we also have district benchmarks and things. And I have this great video, and I hope this works. Hopefully it will. This is a school, this kind of just explains about letting the child kind of be the guide and us watching and allowing them to explore and learn on their own. Good stepping in.
The child's way of doing things has been for us an inexhaustible fountain of revelations. Children find it very hard to concentrate on spoken words, but they have no difficulty concentrating on objects they handle. The developing child must constantly be on the move, acting, looking, thinking, reasoning. They must be active all the time. The child cares little about what others know. They want to learn on their own, experience the world themselves, and perceive it by their own efforts. I saw before me the figure of the child. The child who stands before us with their arms held open, beckoning humanity to follow. And I made a promise, a vow even, to become a follower of the child as my guide.
In the classroom, to us, that means allowing the children to experience and engage in activities independently. But the inverse is also true. It means resisting the urge to lead the child. Instead, Montessori teachers create that environment that encourages self-directional. Are there any questions about the Montessori approach? I just did a quick, really quick overview. I'd encourage anybody who is interested more to come and take a tour of our program. It's fantastic. We're so lucky to have it in the district. Well, all the scores that you just looked at, they're all together. Correct.
Yeah, I'm going to say, let's leave it to board questions for now, because this is not information-only. Sorry. Yeah, sorry, I'm sorry to cut the questions off, too, there, but.
One of the things I just wanted to just, I know parents sometimes have this question is, how is the transition when they leave the Montessori program and they move on to Carter, which they would be starting in a traditional setting? And it's really seamless. It's really, they're well-prepared, and it's very seamless for the kids to move from one program to the other.
So you've had a couple of years, I believe, now at Dyer, right? Is that true, where that you've had all the entire Montessori program under one roof?
Yes, we've been together now with COVID year. We've been together for three years now. So it's been nice to be together as the whole program. And so next year, we'll all be at Cooper from four K all the way through sixth grade.
And do you see the younger classroom, the one through three? Do you interact with the four, five, six classroom or not so much? Because I know you used to be under different schools.
Right, right. We actually have enjoyed interacting with them. We do have students that come in. Each week, I have two students, they have a whole bunch of students, but I'm just speaking from my classroom alone, two students that come in and work with my students, doing reading with them or helping them with the work because they've done all of this work prior, leading up. Because the Montessori curriculum, every child has done all the work that's on those shelves before they leave that room and when they head to the four-six room. So it's great to have those students come back, the kids look forward to it. One of the four-six students just decided that she's going to have a reading time with the students every Friday when she comes in my classroom. So she's spending the last fifteen minutes with her own books that she's bringing in to share with the kids. So it's really nice. So they do, they do go over, they learn from them, they come and they help us with things. So it is really nice to all be together.
Maybe also the board have questions about Montessori? I want to apologize, too, for cutting the question off. It's just the policy we have is for information-only, it's just board questions. But you're welcome to stay. I'm sure Debbie would be happy to answer another question.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody. So I get to talk about school culture, which is my, my passion, I guess, as a school counselor. Our goal for our student improvement plan is to ensure that a hundred percent of our students in our school feel safe and feel accepted here at Dyer School. And it's measured through a school culture survey and student responses during community circles. So I'm going to talk a little bit about that, about community circles and what they are and how they play a part at our school of Dyer and across the school district and the elementary schools and about other things we do as a staff to build culture and community among our students. So some of our staff are wearing the shirts that all of our staff members did get. Our school theme for this year is come one, come all, to the greatest school year of all. We choose a theme to build that cohesiveness and that culture within our school. And so the staff have shirts, and we do things to bring students together. We had an amazing assembly early in the year where we had aerialists come from an aerial school in Lake Geneva and surprised the kids with some amazing, an amazing performance. The students all created a class name and created a class motto to be able to, again, build that community within the individual classroom and then within the school, and they were able to share that with everyone at the assembly. So some fun things to help bring everyone together. Additionally, community circles take place within our elementary classrooms every day. And the community circles are a time for students to really check in in the morning with each other. It gives everyone a nice, kind of a soft start to the day. When you think about hecticness of morning, this gives our students an opportunity to check in with their teacher, check in with their classmates, and it gives every single student a voice. So community circles are implemented at all of the elementary schools as a part of our morning routine. Sometimes they're right away in the morning, sometimes they may be a little later depending on classroom time. But as school counselors in our school district, we give them structure by offering community circle questions like, what is your favorite food? And the students all get a chance to share. Or describe a time when someone showed you kindness, how did that feel? And all the students get to share. We teach, we've taught the teachers and the students how community circles work so that everyone does have a voice, and our community circles have a structure. And community circles are a part of restorative practices within our school district. So it's a way, again, to give all those, all students voice and to give all students a chance to share. They can also be used when there's maybe a classroom issue. Maybe the class is a little loud in the hallways as they're waiting for the bathroom, and so teachers will bring back the class and, as a whole group, have a discussion about how they can improve that for the next time. So community circles are used to just build that community, but then also to solve any problems or concerns that might occur as well. So you can see some pictures of some of our community circles. You can see in this picture right here, this student has a rose. That's a talking piece. Each community circle has a talking piece, and that lets students know it's their turn to talk. It's a great visual for them. They hold it in their hands, they know it's their turn. And when they don't have that, they know it's time to listen, and they do a wonderful job of listening and sharing. So our community circles, we just, just some kind of information. It's a district initiative, which is a part of that restorative practices continuum. So this would be the part that's very preventative by building those relationships among students. You're allowing them to have that, to learn those skills to communicate and be able to solve problems. Staff, we've given some trainings over the past three years. They're tied to our morning announcements. I do have our Dyer morning announcements there, and any, at any time, parents or community members can look at those. They are consistent across the school district as well. Community circles really do a great job just to build those relationships. They build empathy, understanding how someone else might feel, those great communication skills among students. And among the staff that were surveyed, we did a survey with all staff, and ninety-seven percent felt that students looked forward to our community circles. Ninety-seven percent said that students participate willingly. So they're coming there, even our shyest students are ready to share something because they know it's just a little bit, they have the right to pass, but they are sharing. And eighty-one percent of our staff have used community circles as a way of addressing other things that might occur like that hallway behavior or something else that's happened within the classroom or school community. Just some feedback from staff, just saying that students have a turn to talk. They know each other. So you think about school and you're going through your day, you might be with your classmates, and maybe you talk to some students and maybe you don't. But this gives kids a chance to learn just so much about each other. And by doing that, those relationships and friendships are formed so that students feel that sense of community. Teacher said, I feel like my students know they have a voice, they're able to make decisions together. They can see their collective efforts to change situations. Teachers will get together with their class and problem-solve, like, how are we going to fix this? And the students have a voice in that. I've seen a growth in empathy, active listening skills, and a better sense of community through our community circles. So it's one way we're working towards building those connections so that each and every one of our students feels safe and valued within our school community. And I think community circles play in a really important part in that. Oh, another way we build community is through different school events. One is our color run, which we did for the first time last year. Last year was, the first year Dyer was an elementary school. And so we came together with students from all over the district, from different elementary schools. And so we were creating our own community and our own place. And so our annual color run is something that we plan to continue. A great way our kids had, and maybe principals had a really nice time at the color run. And it was just such a wonderful way to round out our year and to bring everybody together. The smiles on those kids' faces, very colorful faces, such a great way. We made sure that all kids had a white shirt to use, so when they left that day, it was not white anymore, but they were very, very full of smiles. So we do things to bring kids together in different ways, and our color run's just another, another way we do that. So I think that's it for me. Are there questions or anything you would like to ask me about building culture and community in our, in our school?
Board members?
I have a question.
Yeah.
I was just listening to you talk about the class culture and community circle, and I heard you describe the ways it connects to. And I heard you describe the ways it connects to belonging, listening skills, empowering students to have a voice, communication and problem solving skills, some behavior management strategies. I guess my question is, can you speak to if that is also related to achievement? Because I think there are a lot of community members where it's wonderful for people to feel included. What, how does that relate to our district achievement?
That's really a really good question. So I guess I can't speak to within our school increases in achievement based on sense of belonging. But maybe Ryan, do you have some things you could share or someone else would have something to share? I'll let you take.
I don't know that I could speak to specifics. I can tell you though that generally when students feel included, when they feel welcome, when they feel celebrated, they are happy to be at school and they're more, they're more likely to perform you know, at a higher ability. So I can't speak to any specific data that we might see on that. But I wouldn't doubt that that plays a role for sure.
That's a really good question. I would love that something that now that you're asking, I will look up. Because I know there's research out there, but I can't point directly to it right at this moment.
That's okay. I wasn't expecting our individual data points.
But I appreciate it. I appreciate that question.
But I just wanted to hear whether you thought they really were.
Yes, I do.
Or intermediate.
Yes. So I do because when students feel safe at school and they feel valued and that they feel they have a place in their school, they're going to be better able to learn, better able to try their best, work their best when they feel safe and included in a part of that school community. So that's, that's where I feel like that would make a big difference. But I definitely hear what you're saying and I'm going to find some data on that because I know it's out there.
If I can just add, since Paige asked that question, one of the things that as a leadership team we spend a lot of time talking about is the connectivity between student achievement and that sense of belonging. And one of the places that we almost always point to in our conversations and our research is work by John Hattie. And Hattie studies all of these effect sizes of what improves student achievement in closing growth and learning gaps. And the number one proven effect size moniker that has come up year after year after year is student self-efficacy. It's that sense of, I have the confidence to perform. And so that is one of the leading reasons that we tether together the cultural and belonging piece with that, whether it's reading or mathematics, for example. Good question. Thank you.
Hey, Bills, on the board have questions?
Yeah, so we've obviously had a fun three years redistricting COVID.
Yes, we have.
Getting back into the classroom.
Yep.
How have this particular group of students come together? Are they still trying to find that connection with each other being from all different locations?
That's a really, that's a really good question as well. So over the past two years, we have worked to create these opportunities where students can come together. One thing I should bring up, we have buddy classrooms where teachers are partnered with each other so that they have a chance to connect. So it really, through the community circles, through all school events, through things like buddy classrooms, we're creating these opportunities for relationship building so that students find that connection, that person that they can connect with. Because when you were comfortable being in the same school for a long time and then there are changes, especially when we talk about our older students, we as adults have to work harder to build those connections, to help those students connect. Because you may not, just in a daily life of walking through the building, going to your class, you might see your class all the time and a few other classes, but you may not have those connections. And so we, we work to create opportunities to allow students to build those connections so that they can then have relationships with other students in our building. So it's something I know we look forward to as the, there's more changes to come that we look forward to how we're going to be doing that for all the students in the upcoming year as well.
Thank you.
Anyone else on the board have questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dyer staff for presentation, very, or very informative. Second item for information discussion now is a building and grounds update regarding Carter. It looks like I got, yeah, Dan Bocock. I didn't see you there in the room.
Well, thank you for having me here again tonight. We wanted to give you guys all a update in regards to Carter and some of the, what's been going on the past year in regards to some water damage that happened to the building. Prior to, you know, the building being turned over to the school district, PRA's engineer here, myself, you know, have done walkthroughs of the building. We create a punch list of items that maybe still need to be addressed in the building or items of concern that maybe aren't functioning properly because we're still trying to work tweaks out. And one item that was always, that was brought up was that there was an air pressure issue in the building. So instead of the building having somewhat of a positive pressure, the building had a little bit of a negative pressure. So it was actually sucking air in from the outside. But throughout the last year and a half, these issues have always been, we've been trying to tweaks. We've added an expansion tank. We've done a lot of things and worked diligently with our partners in this project to rectify any of these ongoing issues that had happened. And of course, over the last year, we've had some pretty extreme weather events that has led to some damage happening to Carter. First, we had some damage happen to the wood floor. The west doors facing towards the football field, exterior doors. When we had a major, major rainfall was the first time that we actually noticed that there was water on the floor by the doors. And what we discovered was that the seals that were on the doors, you could partially see a little bit of daylight through the door seals. And then what was happening, because we actually did figure it out, we took a sprinkler, put a sprinkler on the outside of the building and watched because you really didn't see water coming in. And it was getting into the seal, then running down the, basically the frame of the door, down to the door jamb and then just going directly underneath the wood floor. So it wasn't anything that was, we really saw a whole lot until all of a sudden, myself and James, the building engineer, was walking through and we're like, holy cow, the floor's really cupped here on this end of the gym. And cupped is when the floor has too much of moisture. It then expands and then it causes the floor to actually either rise and we call it cupping. So that was turned into our insurance company in regards to that. The doors were then had rubber seals added to them all the way around so that they are sealed tight now to reduce any chance of any water getting into the gym in the future, which is of course crucial for wood floor. Then, of course, this past Christmas break, in December, we had a major winter weather storm come in in regards to high winds and very low temperatures. We had below zero temperatures for, I believe, over forty-eight hours with it hitting close to negative thirty-five with wind chills and wind blowing at upwards of forty miles an hour. So luckily, there was a user group actually in Carter on the day that we had a pipe burst in the bathroom, in the fitness center, and it was noticed relatively quickly. And some of our administration and our buildings and ground team responded immediately to rectify the water that had gotten into the building. Through mitigation company and Shear, we were actually able to clean up and our buildings and grounds cleaned up the building in time so we never lost any sort of instructional time due to that water leak occurring. And the pipe was in a bathroom exterior wall, which led to an outside spigot on the building. So that wall was opened up and it was fixed by Shear. And the mitigation came through and made sure that all the moisture and everything was out of the building. So that, that with those two issues, everything that has had damage has been addressed. We still are, the gym floor is being addressed July thirty-first. The company that did install it is coming in to resurface and replace some of the boards that are in the gym itself so it's back to whole. We did, however, we have continued to work with Train and with Grave, the engineers on the project. And we believe that we have solved all the issues that is in regards to the air pressure in the building. There was, throughout the duration of the last year and a half, I believe there was twenty-nine different times that we've tried different tweaks to make sure that it was working properly. And we believe now we have the correct air pressure and the correct tweaks done to the building because we've now sustained for the last month having a positive air pressure in the building. So we wanted to give you an all, an update because there was some pretty major things that did happen to the building. We did fix them and we did work diligently with our partners to make sure that any of these concerns were addressed and that moving forward that we don't have any more water issues with that building.
How do you increase the air pressure in a building? Do you tweak the HVAC? I'm just curious.
It's all the HVAC, exhaust fans, airflow.
Okay.
It was, it was a combination. We actually stripped all the tweaks that we made off and started from scratch. You know, just started from the beginning where the original set points were, just to make sure that none of the, I mean, there was, there was emails after emails and meetings after meetings in regards to it to try to make sure that it was, you know, working correctly. And I'm just happy that it is now.
Would you come to my house to help me? I have negative air pressure. There's a lot of cold air coming in.
So was the initial balancing report even and then something changed that put us into negative pressure?
Yeah, the initial balancing report was, was correct. And then we started having, the first thing that we noticed was that the handicap doors wouldn't open because of the negative airflow. And we don't know what happened because we can look back, of course, in the building automation system and see where the adjustment was. But then that's when we started at that point was that was when we first noticed. So then we started making tweaks on the system to either allow more exhaust air in. Or, you know, we had our dampeners for outside, then we turned them up to a hundred percent so that we're drawing more air into the building. So nobody can really pinpoint exactly what, there just was a lot of people that know more than me about HVAC systems, making tweaks to it, so.
Okay, so it was turned over to us balanced at least though?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Jay. Yeah, thank you.
All right, last item for information discussion this evening is the first reading of changes to policy two, five, two, two, our library. Yeah, and Jill, would you give us a little introduction?
You bet. Okay, so just as a reminder to the policy, some adjustments that have been made to it based on our book committee that we had put together is that there would be an additional taking of mature content text with a call number at the end of the ID of that book for all parents and students to see within Destiny with an MC label at the end. Again, that was something that was not currently in place prior to us putting together the book committee. All of the mature texts would be found at the high school. We did find that there were seventeen books at the middle school that were MC mature content and we are working to shift them to the high school. We will add two additional permission slips that will be put in place. Remember, we already have the two, the sixth grade permission slip for YA we already have in place. And we have an eighth grade one for a high school book that is already in place. The additional two permission slips that the committee came up with is a high school permission slip where any high school student wanting to check out a book that is labeled as mature content or adult would need parent permission in order to do so. The other overall permission slip that the committee came up with was for 4K all the way through twelfth grade. If there's a parent that is concerned about a certain topic or text, they can let us know. We can put that in Destiny and then our staff would know to ensure their student does not check out books in that genre or topic area. We also are making adjustments to our website to indicate the different types of genre, including all of our permission slips and also ensuring that all the parents are aware of all the different topics that can be found in our libraries. That is something that came up from the parents, that they weren't clear on everything that is available in our, in our libraries. We also are working to put together a video for parents to be able to view and how to use Destiny. Again, the community members shared they didn't know anything about Destiny. And that is the platform where parents can see all the texts that we have in the school district and what books their students are checking out. We also will be adding a section to our online registration in August to ensure that all parents are aware of all the different information to know about relating to our libraries. It is just, it will be an informational box within registration that they would not be able to click pass without reading to ensure, again, that all parents are aware of everything that's taking place in our libraries. We are also making an adjustment to the policy where instead of it saying anything about removal of books, it is all about reclassification of books. That was something that the committee had consensus around. There is also adjustments to the policy in relation to how often a reconsideration committee can be formed. In the past, anytime material will come forward, a committee would need to be formed within ten days. That is an adjustment that we would like to make where we are suggesting, and it's in policy this way, that there would be two different timeframes in the school year where any materials would be collected for, let's say, for example, from August through January. Any materials up for reconsideration would be collected by myself. And then at that time, we would form committees based on how many materials need to be reconsidered for classification. Then we would do the same thing for all of spring, collecting any information that would come forward to us and then have a, form committees in June. So twice a year, our committees would form for those reclassification forms instead of every ten days that a material would come forward. And then lastly, there is also in the policy that any one individual can submit a maximum of two items for material review per school year. And that is also in the policy. Those are in broad view, those kind of the big, big ideas of the adjustments to the library policy.
Hey, board members have questions for Jill or comments? Yeah, Barry?
I've got just a couple that I think will be relatively easy. I just need clarification on. I'm not a librarian or a teacher, so forgive the ignorance on this one. Age of material must be published within the last twenty years or be historically significant. How do we discover what, or how do we decide what's historically significant? And what texts would that preclude? For instance, would the lesser works of Edgar Allan Poe be not allowed because they're over twenty years old, but they're not historically significant?
So I feel like I know the answer to this one, even though I'm not a librarian either. So my understanding of texts that would stay in the library over twenty years old would be classics, is what we would have in the libraries and know that most classics are listed as adult. If you recall, Angie had shared that a lot of our books that are older texts are labeled as adult. And as new authors and new text comes out, there is much more clarity and a lot more tags for books that are more recent texts. But that would be the only reason in my understanding of why something would be over twenty years old.
Okay, thank you. Then the second one is kind of comprehensive of a couple of things. The permission slips pertaining to all the way through high school. We do have some high schoolers that become eighteen before they graduate. How does this impact them? Additionally, we have a statement in here that says, parents of a student under the age of sixteen have the right to review upon request library records relating to the use of the library's documents, other materials by the student. Why do we have a permission slip till eighteen, but parents can't find out what they're looking at after sixteen?
Um, that is more so in there because that is a suggested age from the library bill of rights. So that is more so in associates, in association with that. But realistically, Barry, a parent can log into their student's Destiny account from 4K all the way through twelfth grade and see what texts they're checking out.
Sure, and that makes sense. I was just wondering if we've got a conflict with what's written down here versus what we're trying to do.
I can relook at that right there and, and while you guys are discussing and, and read it also in that context and see if I can answer that question.
Thanks.
Did you get a sufficient answer on the eighteen-year-old question, Barry?
We would use, we would use a permission slip for all students in the high school, whether you're eighteen or not within our, in the, in the high school setting.
Yeah, we utilize an age of majority principle that basically says, even if you're eighteen, we're still going to contact your parents.
Okay.
Until they graduate.
And the only reason I'm asking is, is that going to cause us any problems down the road if we have an eighteen-year-old saying, I don't care what mom and dad said. I want to check this out? I mean, they're an adult in the eyes of the law. I mean, they're an adult in the eyes of the law.
No, because we still, we still follow in loco parentis, which means that we're, even though you have that permission, we're not going to do that, it's going to go through your parents. And so that, that is our sort of modus operandi in anything when they turn 18. Now, if the parent wants to sign off on that and say, "Well, Barry's 18, I'm going to let him make his own decisions," they, then a parent could sign off on that, but it has to be done by the parent.
Good.
Yep.
I'm, I'm not, or, or against, I'm just trying to understand what we're doing.
So, I want to make sure I had a good answer.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, and high school admin's real used to that. Having been a former high school admin myself, but when students try to do that, no, that doesn't work.
Long as you're under the, of the high school, you're still governed by the rules of the high school regardless of whether you're an adult or not, yeah?
Correct.
Any other board members?
And what's the, the timeframe? You said two times a year. What is those, those months? I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
So, the thought process is January and June.
I don't, the policy has a specific time, though. It's flexible, I believe, right?
Yes, it is flexible.
Okay.
So, everything collected in June would be, the committee would be convened in January?
Anything collected between January and June would be reviewed in June.
Okay. Okay.
Good question.
And then one last one. Again, the reconsideration committee, principal, librarian, teacher, and two parents.
Minimum of two parents, yep.
Minimum, okay. And I'm pretty sure there's no, I, I've thought about this, and I don't know that there's any way that we could really do it. How would we facilitate having a balanced committee?
Having a what?
A balanced committee.
Balanced committee.
Yes, because my fear, looking at this, is books are submitted, a committee is convened, and you don't have equal number of voices on that committee. Therefore, once I just, you know, we're not going to reconsider anything, everything stays as is. How do we, how do we balance out that committee or that potential committee?
To me, I think the way to read that section of the policy is with the, the, when it talks through the staffing, it says it may include, right? It doesn't say it will include. So, that's where the balance of the committee would always take place where there's always more parents than staff.
I, I'd suggest, too, that a committee doesn't necessarily have preconceived sides. You could have a committee where you come with an open mind and you're open to thinking. I mean, it's, I think there's a spectrum of views on, on library veterans potentially.
I would agree, but a lot of times, people aren't as open-minded as we want them to be. So, you could potentially get people who are dead-set on intellectual freedom, and I'm not going to budge off of that. And then you get others that, you know, are concerned about graphic material in the library. So, again, how do you balance both sides so that both sides can come to an effective agreement and get to a consensus?
And I, I hear what you're saying, Marlo. I guess I'd hope the committee would be comprised of people open-minded to different points of view. Because you bring a committee together, but just like a school board, right? We may have different opinions on some things, we, but we are, respect our, each other as colleagues and listen and consider those points.
Well, and it implies that anyone on the committee is representative of the majority of the community. I mean, it's a small committee. All you can do is your best effort with that committee. I mean, we can stack a committee with four people out of five, and it still doesn't mean the entire community feels that way. It's, I don't think it.
But we can always have a larger committee, too. So, I mean, you, you're, I think you guys hear what I'm saying and you're understanding me. However, I don't think, well, we definitely don't feel the same way about this because, again, we've got 50 books yet still need to be reviewed, so to speak. And we're still quibbling over mature content label, whether or not to use excerpts or not use excerpts. And clearly, the use of excerpts is not the majority. And I think that's based on the representation of the committee. So, again, I have concerns with this, that the committees, when they're convened, may not be balanced so that there is a consensus that not, every side, every side should not be happy. They should feel some pain in this. So, I just don't see how, or better yet, I'm just questioning how we would be able to balance the committee. That's all. So, I don't think we can answer that question now, but, because I'm, I'm open to any suggestions on how that could possibly be done, but, I don't know, so.
I, I don't know if there's an answer to that, Marlo. I, I understand what your concern is. I, I think here is where I'd have to rely on our administrative team who's going to put together the committee, who's going to appoint the committee, to attempt to try to draw people in with different points of view. So, you have a robust discussion, and people maybe who have different opinions on this are brought into the committee so that the committee can make a good recommendation. I don't know, does he have any? I don't know how else to do it, Marlo.
I was asking questions.
Yeah.
Just asking questions, so.
Know that.
Hold on.
Know that the thought process, too, of the idea of having the committees take place twice a year is so that based on the number of materials up for reclassification, we may need to form multiple committees, right? So, if there's 10 books, to think one committee can review 10 books and, and read all of those books is probably unrealistic in order to complete that in a, in a quicker timeline. So, we would form multiple committees, so know that as well.
Any other questions or comments for Jill? All right, well, just to be clear and let you, anything else, Jill?
No.
Okay, I just want to be clear that tonight is a first reading of our policy. All district policies that we either adopt, repeal, or amend, we go through two readings. So, at one board meeting, we do a first reading. The second board meeting is where we would actually take action. And it's a, you know, it's part of our policy that we use this procedure to be deliberative and make sure that when we're changing policy, which is a, a critical thing that we do as a school board, that we're thoughtful about doing it. And we give the public also a notice of that we're going through a, a change, adoption, or repealing a policy. That's it for the items for discussion. We do have five items for action. The first would be the adoption of the high school math curriculum. And Jill, I'm going to guess you're, you're back up, so.
I was going to interject real quick. I was going to say, you guys are welcome to stay, but you don't have to. You've, you've had long days teaching, so we understand.
Thanks, Barry, yeah.
If you want to hang around and hear about a high school math curriculum, Dyer, you're welcome to.
And that's true for anybody in the audience. We'd love to have you stay and, for the rest of the meeting, but don't, we won't be offended if you decide to leave, but.
Okay, we ready?
Yes, please.
Okay. So, I'm wanting to bring a high school 9-9-12 math adoption to you. This has been a long time coming in some ways. It has been a very long time since the high school math team has had a adoption of a new curriculum. They've been working through a curriculum that they have designed on their own and really feel that there is a need for, for clearer alignment based on what we're seeing within our data at the high school level when it comes to math, and really wanting to ensure that alignment is really rigorous and, and really clear between Algebra I and Geometry and Algebra II. So, our high school staff with Andrea Garrity, our math coordinator, worked through this first document that you see here with the three circles on it. This was kind of their, the guiding focus that, and questions for them to consider as they looked through 11 different math curriculums in order to land on the one that we are presenting to you tonight. So, you can see those questions that they went over. And then behind that is also the Wisconsin Guiding Principles in relation to what Wisconsin is looking for when it comes to state standards and expectations for students. So, those are the two different pictures that you also have in that three-page set of information in regard to what questions were used for our team to make a decision. Then also, they followed a really rigorous instructional materials evaluation tool. So, they use this tool here. Happy to give it to you and pass it around, but this is what our team also used in order to make sound decisions about all 11 of the different curriculums that they looked through. We also follow and look at Ed Reports. So, Ed Reports is a site that is vetted by numerous different people and companies and researchers in order to support school districts and knowing if the curriculum really does meet state standards or not. Sometimes it's hard to look at, you, when you're looking at 11, you don't really have the time necessarily to get all the materials in district to see all of it. But Ed Reports really helps you narrow down in regard to if, if this, a certain curriculum meets expectations or does not meet expectations. So, the one presenting to you now is HMH. That is Holton, Holton, Mifflin, Harcourt. And what we would like to do is adopt this curriculum that you're seeing in front of you for both Algebra I, Geometry, and then Algebra II. So, that would really be the math curriculum that is utilized in freshman, sophomore, and junior year. We would start this, or plan on starting this in the fall, and will also ensure that our staff have plenty of professional development in order to make the switch from what they're doing right now to a really robust math curriculum moving forward. The plan would be that this is a five-year commitment with HMH. And within those five years, if you, you'll notice that this resource is a bit more traditional in its framework, and that is something that our staff really were liking about the resource at the moment. Know that there is also a desire within the next five years to ensure that we're really also moving in the direction of really hands-on, real-world application where there's a lot of student discourse at the same time. So, within the five years, we do plan on also embedding a bit more of that that might not be within the text. The, the reason this is coming to you is because it costs more than $25,000. Anything coming over to you that is more than $25,000 needs to come to the board for approval. And know that we happen to have a credit of $84,000 within, with, within HMH already. We had a K5 social studies adoption that was adopted three years ago and has been used for two years. It was a six-year adoption. Our staff at the elementary level were not as pleased with the curriculum, nor was I in relation to its robustness, hands-on experience for students, and, and engagement. So, did contact the company and asked them if we can get out of our contract, and we could if we were to keep a credit. So, we have a credit of $84,000 with HMH. Know that when I talked with the math team, I did share with them that, I didn't, I didn't actually share with them that we had a credit with HMH. To me, I wasn't wanting them to feel like they need to choose HMH. They could choose whatever they felt was the best based on the information that I was sharing with you here. And then they did actually land on HMH, which I was, I was surprised at. So, the full cost of the math curriculum at the high school is $87,000, and that does include some professional development. It, it is ensuring that we have class sets of, of texts that are in all of our classrooms. It comes with all the teacher guides. It also comes with every single student being able to have an online textbook. And there's also planning guides and resources, additional resources for students to use along with some professional development. And all of that came to $87,000. So, the difference credit-wise that would come out of my budget is $3,000 because of that $84,000 credit that we have.
Any questions for Jill?
I have a question.
Yeah.
I have a comment. I'm happy to see that we have STEM consultants working on the books. It was interesting to see that. And I know that our, the, the book company has been around for a long time, and I, I know you've used them when I taught, and they're a good company. So, I think they keep up with what's going on, and I think it looks great.
Thank you.
Marlo and I were going to do some geometry problems, but ran out of time.
Right?
So, you mentioned that this is a five-year plan, right? So, by year three, you're not really seeing any type of significant gains. What's your plan to pivot then? Or, or is that really, I guess, is that a fair question to ask, given that the scope is five years?
I would say that it's, hopefully, to me, we start to see a, a change in scores next year even. But I do think it will take three years for us to truly see that growth in student achievement, especially having students go through Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II with the curriculum. So, I do think it'll take a few years to see that. But at that three-year mark is, is when we will definitely be reviewing, but also to me, prior to that, starting to try to infuse some other hands-on, real-world application within there as well.
I guess my final question, because you kind of answered all the ones I had, which is great. How easy will it be for the district to share this curriculum and communicate it to students and their parents? Because obviously, you have some that are used to the old way, and this is a brand-new concept.
So, that, that's a really good question and something that I've been talking to all of our math specialists about is we want to ensure that we start to put out some videos and tutorials for parents when it comes to how our, how our curriculum really works and how they can support the students at home, especially more so in the pre-K through fifth grade level. We use Bridges as a curriculum, and Bridges really focuses on more of a strategy approach and really ensuring that we teach multiple different strategies to students, and there's not just one way to solve a problem. And it's a lot more visual, a lot more hands-on, trying to help students see numbers like Debbie Treewin was talking about, where you see it as a actual item instead of it just being a rote memorization, and that really helps students with number sense. But that is something that we are wanting to start to engage in and have our math specialists assist with, is some video tutorials to support parents on how to support their students at home. A good question, so we, we could do that at the high school as well.
So, what's the potential, what's the ETA to roll something out like that? Because I imagine that's quite complex.
Videos?
But, I mean, just to put all that together, that's going to be pretty time-consuming. So, what's the potential turnaround time for that?
We have, at the elementary level, we're intentionally sending two of our math specialists to go to Minnesota to be, train the trainers for our Bridges program. That is intentional as well, so that when we have onboarding of new staff, we have our own staff in-house that can train our new teachers. But I do anticipate when they come back that we would be able to engage in some of those videos, starting in August, September.
How many years of math are students required to take at the high school?
Three.
Three. So, would these courses then, would this cover most of the students at the high school?
Yes.
Most kids are taking Algebra I, Algebra II, and Geometry, or not in that order, though. Don't they take Geometry in the middle?
They take Algebra, then Geometry, and then Algebra II. And Algebra II is a predictor, if you receive a C or higher in Algebra II, that it is a predictor that you would do okay freshman year of college and, and, and your coursework at, at the college level.
Actually, I got it.
I got one real quick.
We'll give you a chance to comment, because this is an item for action, so thank you. Be patient.
I'm seeing workbooks. Are these chargebacks to students? Are these provided every year for five years? How does this work out?
No, so, we can purchase those. So, you can purchase them individually per student. If the staff were to say that's what they want us to do, then we would do that. So, they would be a consumable that the district would pick up and pay for for every student. At the moment, the staff don't feel like that is what they would want to do. They would rather have the copies of that and then be able to make copies of the text that they would want to use.
Is that part of our license to be able to copy parts of this?
Yeah.
Okay.
There, if you notice, there are, the student digital licenses are included, and so that is part of that, yeah.
Okay. And just for clarification, I'm pretty positive I do not have a conflict, but I may. And just for clarification, I'm pretty positive I do not have a conflict, but I may. So I'm abstaining on this vote until I can speak with Steve for clarification on that.
What's the typical lifespan of a curricular material, like an Algebra book? I'm just curious, what, how does this compare to other curricular material we give?
I would say-
At the high school and maybe district-wide, I'm curious.
So, that's a really good question. I would say at K-8, the curricular review cycle really is more in the five to seven range at the high school. It has been exceeding that year range, and that is something that I would really like to change and has been spending quite a bit of time focusing in on the elementary level, but then also at the high school level to ensure that we are getting materials to our staff that are really robust and up-to-date.
So by exceeding, you mean, just to be clear, longer than five to seven years? Like, it could be 10 years.
The high schools right now? Yes.
Any other questions or comments at the board level? I think Mr. Kobernick, did you have a, a comment? In order for the people to hear at home, I'm gonna ask you to come up to the microphone.
So my first question is, are there other schools in the area that use this curriculum that we could use as like a basis to see if it's better or worse, or, you know? And then I think you answered most of my other questions, which I appreciate. I guess the other thing I want to bring up is I was looking at other districts around in the area, and Mesquiko's doing really well in math. So I'm wondering if we're using a similar program to what they're using, or, you know?
Yeah, most school districts are using HMHC, CPM, or IM is what most school districts are, are utilizing. This HMH is the most traditional of the three. IM is one that we can utilize and also still infuse, which our staff also want to do. If you see there, one of the questions even on the bottom of this sheet for our staff to review was, do we have the ability to use more than one resource? So that is something that we are able to do because we all know one resource is, is usually never the perfect fit for every single standard, for every single thing. What I am feeling fortunate about is that we do have a math coordinator with us at the moment, who is a former math teacher at the high school level. And she has been fantastic in helping lead the team. She is also participating in the CISA One Math Network, which involves people around the state that work for other school districts in order for us to engage in conversations and see what other people are doing. She mapped out what almost every school, not every school district, but a fair amount of school districts in the state and what programs they are using for us to really look. What is the sequencing that we're seeing throughout the state? What do freshmen usually take, sophomores, juniors, seniors? So we did a very robust look at not just what we're doing and not just what our neighboring districts are doing, but everyone in the state to really ensure that we are picking something that we feel really confident for, for our students. And Mesquiko is one that sometimes get, that's what I was gonna say. One that sometimes is, is really important to think about is that we, we really need to start to invest more into coaches and instructional coordinators for the school district when it comes to teaching and learning. Mesquiko has 18 instructional coaches. We have never had any until this year with escrow funds. Any. So when we start to think about really wanting to audit and look at what's happening in Tier One instruction, which means what's happening in every single classroom across the system, we have to have more people in order for us to really dive in and support our classroom teachers with teaching and learning. So again, we have four coordinators this year, and, and will be having just two next year.
If the referendum passes, will we still have two? Or is it gonna depend on?
I think it will all depend on how the referendum goes.
So if it passes, we would potentially have more than two, I guess?
Ideally, ideally, I think four is a good start.
Yeah.
In order to support K-5, but also 612. When you start to think of every subject area that we have across the district, you'll, not just ELA in math, but you're circling science, social studies, health, PE, art, wellness, all of our elective offerings, right? There, there's a lot there. And especially onboarding new staff that come into the district as well, but ensuring that everyone's aligned and there's accountability with what assessments everyone's using and ensuring everyone really is meeting the grade-level standards in every single classroom and providing that coaching and feedback support for our staff. They have really appreciated the help this year, and, and it's been really cool to hear from the staff and that they've seen the impact of the coordinators this year.
Any other questions?
Eighth grade algebra, that's a good question. Eighth grade algebra is covered because you can take ninth grade algebra as a eighth grader. So the HMH curriculum here would also be given to our eighth grade teacher that teaches high school Algebra I, Algebra. So that eighth grade year would mimic and be the same as what students would be getting at the high school.
Thank you for your questions. Anybody else in the audience have questions? Board members, last call on questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion then to approve the expenditure for the high school math curriculum material.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion's made and seconded. Any further comments? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? All right, passes. Oh, thank you. I didn't ask for abstentions. Appreciate you keeping me on my toes tonight, thanks. Ruth, I think it's the business office.
Thank you. I, feel free to look at the text here, and then if you are wanting to take one for some reason, just let me know. Otherwise, I'll, I'll collect them at the end of the night.
You're gonna have to have help carrying them. It really-
I'm pretty strong, Roseanne.
Okay.
Actually, I thought of that, Roseanne, because I see our kids at the high school when they're hauling their books between classes, it's-
It's just this, I think these are the teacher editions, but still.
Are they?
Yeah.
Ready? Okay, thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. One thing, what we're going to talk about is debt defeesance, which we'll explain in a minute, but it's one way that we can show our commitment to being fiscally responsible. As you know, hopefully know, the last couple of years, we've been able to do, use this tool. It's called debt defeesance, which is prepaying our long-term debt. It's like paying extra on your home mortgage to reduce the length of the term that you have to repay that debt over. So the last two years, we levied approximately 1.6 million extra. This will be the third year that we're going to use this tool. So this year is 3 million extra. And then we're prepaying on the, the 2018 referendum capital debt. Okay? So I think if we look at the, the one handout called Summary of Cash Defeesance that Baird has prepared, and this is an attachment that's made public for everybody to look at. The first kind of boxed column on the left shows our current debt structure. They were 20-year bonds going through 2039. Weird to say that, but. And then the middle column, the second boxed column, says after defeesance. So what this debt would look like after we prepay this $3 million. What I want you to focus on are the, the 2039 and the 2038 years. So if we look at 2039 in that first boxed column, the remaining principal is 1,455,000. Okay, now if you look at the, the middle column box column that says after defeesance, you see three little asterisks. So that goes away. Because once we, we prepay this, it's removed from our books. Okay, so we eliminated 2039 between the, the three years. And then 2038, right above that, was, is currently 2.8 million. After this debt defeesance will be 1,260,000. So that's where that 3 million drops off of that total that we owe. So we've knocked more than a year and a half off of our debt over these three years. Make sense? Okay, so keep going to the right then, that next column after the two boxes says Reduction in Fund 39 Debt Service. So all those years that say 105,000, we're also reducing what we owe every year because that's less interest we're gonna have to pay on all those outstanding bonds every year. So it's also helping to lower the amount, the required levy every year to pay our debt. And then way down at the bottom of that column, it just shows the savings from defeesance is 1,575,000. So over these three years, we've levied not quite 4.6 million, but then we've saved almost 2.3 million, so like 50%, which is phenomenal. Okay? All make sense? Okay. So then what we have to act on tonight is that there was a resolution that was also attached. And what that resolution is authorizing is that $3 million to be applied towards the 2039 and the 2038 principal. It's authorizing us to put that money into escrow because these payments aren't actually callable until April of '27. So this money gets put aside into this fund, earns interest, they'll make the payments that come due until that callable date. But once that's put into escrow, we get to take it off of our books. So it's considered paid. And then the third thing it's doing is authorizing administration to sign the appropriate documents on the closing date of April 6th and transfer the funds. So that's what, what's in that resolution. So we would ask you to approve that, please, and then we do need a roll-call vote.
Ruth, I noticed in that table that we were looking at before, there was variability in the rates. Do you know why that is? It's, sorry, it's at 5% right now, but as the time goes on, it is slower?
That was the original, that's how it was structured, like when they originally brought that 43 million.
Yeah.
What rates they could get when they placed those original bonds.
Okay. Okay, that's a- No, that's, that's perfectly fine, I'm just curious.
That's part of what they're, that's what they're- If you sign it instantly because the interest rate's high or low, that whole 3 million is going to be able to support the fund.
Okay.
I'll just add one more piece, because we have had this question surface, and that is that this is an amount that you're levying that is outside of the revenue limit, because by statute, when the community supported that referendum, it's a known thing that that money has to be paid back. And so this amount that you're levying, this is outside the revenue limit, and this really has been a strategy that you've used these last couple of years to help and stabilize the mill rate. And so the mill rate has continued to go down, and yet this has helped it to go down at a more reasonable level while at the same time, in the long term, saving a tremendous amount of money to the taxpayers.
Yes, thank you for adding that clarification.
Any other questions or comments? Or I'd entertain a motion then to approve the resolution for the debt defeesance.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motions have been seconded. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, I guess it's a roll-call vote. Toby, would you mind in the roll-call?
Peter Turk?
Yes.
Barry Schmeling?
Yes.
Susan Kessler?
Yes.
Taylor Wushaw?
Yes.
Arlo Brown?
Yes.
Paige Caravoo?
Yes.
Roseanne Han?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And there are several pieces of paperwork that some of you have to sign too. Thank you.
Thanks, Ruth. Next, on, I'm gonna apologize in the audience, I didn't ask if you wanted questions on the debt defeesance. Okay, fair enough. Here, here.
That's good.
We like saving taxpayers' money, too. Good, good thing. Third item for action of five is the Human Resources, the preliminary notice of renewals. Barry is the head of the Personnel Committee. You wanna take the lead on this one?
Yes, is part of our issues with funding and with our reduced enrollment. We've got some issues, some notices of non-renewals that we need to issue. There are seven of them in total, and we reviewed this as the Personnel Committee on Friday, and it was unanimous to approve. So I would put that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded to approve the preliminary notice of non-renewals for, it's like seven staff members. Any comments or questions?
I would note that, well, actually, no, no comments.
Well, I think it's sad, these people are gonna be, some of these are gonna be disappointed to get a non-renewal.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay, thank you, Barry. Fourth item for action is the School Board resignation. We have to approve Kevin Byrd's resignation from the School Board.
I move we accept Kevin Byrd's resignation.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any comments?
I'd really like to thank Kevin. He brought a lot to the district in his time here. The construction of Karcher alone is very crucial in that, so wish him well in his future endeavors, and he'll be missed, but looking forward to working with Paige as well.
I can't agree with you more. I enjoyed working with Kevin as a colleague. I'm also thoroughly looking forward to working with Paige and excited what she can bring to our group. Anybody else? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor accepting Kevin's resignation, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay? I'm gonna apologize again, I forgot to ask the audience if they had any comments on the last two items, so I didn't feel like you would. Okay, thank you, yeah. I need somebody to keep me on my toes here, so I appreciate that. The last item is the Board of Canvassers. So Susan, would you just take this one?
So yes, we will have the Board of Canvassers. And what they do is, after the election, they check all the numbers that we get from the city and the township and different numbers like that, just make sure that everything is correct regarding the vote. So we've decided on April 6th that 4 o'clock, we will have the Board of Canvassers will convene.
Okay, thanks, Susan.
You're welcome.
So do we have a Board of Canvassers selected?
We do.
Okay. I'm sorry, I was distracted.
Would you like me to?
Yeah.
Yes. So I can't be on the Board of Canvassers since I will be one of the candidates, but it's gonna be Barry, and it's gonna be Jill, and Ruth.
Okay, perfect. I guess we, do we need to approve that, though? This is an item for action, the Board of Canvassers? I think it says Susan will select, I think it's designated, so. Fair enough, okay. Again, I'm gonna guess the audience has no comments on that, it's a fun three. Future meeting dates, Steve?
Yeah, there are just sort of three things to point out. One, the first thing is that on March 29th at 7:00 PM, for anyone who is interested, we will be at Vets' Terrace. That'll be the final public presentation about the operational referendum. So for anyone, you know, here or at home who would like to hear that presentation, that is on March 29th. Also, before we officially meet as a full board again, April 4th is Election Day. There are two pretty key items for the school district. One is the operational referendum, and the other is that there are candidates that will be elected on that night. One is the operational referendum, and the other is that there are candidates that will be elected on that night. So please do vote. Then on March 13th, that is the monthly meeting of the Board of Education at 7:00 PM, right here.
All right, thank you. That being said, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thanks, everyone, for coming tonight.
Lost just about everybody.
Yeah, with, the people who stayed, you guys are the-